Thank you. We'd like to call our meeting back to order, please. We are on our agenda item dealing with recognitions and awards. Laura Lee, if you'd please make some introductions.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of our special guests, of which we have a large number tonight, and our business partners. And I'll ask Mr. Jim Smith to come forward. He's our Director of Community Development, to help recognize our business partners. If Jim is not here, how about Ruth Nelson, who's our Manager of Community Development? And while she's coming up here, I thought I saw her back there.
She is here.
Okay. Our first recognition is going to be for Midwest Truck. Jeff Phillips is the Service Manager. Is Jeff here? Okay, let's... When Jeff comes, we'll get to him. Let's do our Kansas Partners in Education. David Depew, Bill Frick, Diane Steele, Jenny Schwartzbeck, Sam Logan, and Ruth. And come on forward. Our Kansas Partners in Education has been an ongoing group in the state of Kansas for over 14 years, and was initiated to recognize business partners throughout the state of Kansas. Honeywell was one of the first Olathe recipients for their mentorship program, and partners are found in both businesses and through community organizations who give unselfishly of their time to serve children. Several of these folks here tonight represent past recipients of the Kansas Partners in Education Awards, and we'd like to take this opportunity to commend them for their continued service to our district. Sam Logan, step forward, please. Represents the Santa Fe Trail Rotary Club. They and the Olathe Noon Rotary provide readers in our elementary schools every year, and this is about the fifth year for that program. Diane Steele and Jenny Schwartzbeck, step forward, please. Direct the seniors-serving schools volunteers who give many, many hours of service to our schoolchildren each year and have for a number of years. Bill Frick, who's with us tonight, is an Associate Superintendent with a neighboring district.[148.44][148.44](Laughter) He serves Johnny Mission.[151.16][151.16](Laughter) And he's a new board member with the Kansas Partners in Education, and we really appreciate him being here tonight. And Jim Smith, who is not with us tonight, I believe he's ill, and Ruth Nelson, please step forward. Our past Presidents of Kansas Partners in Education and current Board members. We wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the Kansas Partners in Education Board for their continued work to support our school district and extend our appreciation to some of the partners from the past who have a long-term commitment to our district and our children. Okay, Ruth, could you come over here, please? Have you seen Jeff Phillips?
I don't, I haven't.
Okay, if you do, let me know. Okay. Okay. Okay, our next recognition is Adam Siaffi from Green Springs. He's a student, and his teacher, Joe Winkler, and Principal Brenda Trober. Mimi's Cafe has recognized Adam, who's a 5th grade student at Green Springs, as one of 15 Kansas City finalists in their annual "The Right Stuff" Essay Writing Program. Adam and the other finalists, who are all students from the greater Kansas City area, were honored on November 15th during an awards luncheon. Mimi's has sponsored this Thanksgiving-themed essay contest since 1993, and this year, the essay was "What I Have to Be Thankful For." And the contest judges sifted through more than 1,250 entries. Joe Winkler, who's Adam's 5th grade teacher, said all his students participated in the essay contest after the class talked about how they lived their lives and the idea of appreciating everything, from the simplest things to the most important. Joe says that Adam is not only an outstanding writer, but a young man of character, who makes a positive difference in class every single day, and he came here tonight after working on a blanket-making project with the kids from his school, for those people who are cold and need help. Right, Adam? Let's give Adam a big congratulations.[310.12][310.12](Applause) Okay, and Adam has some family members here. His mom is a 3rd grade teacher at Scarborough, and I think his dad and his sister are here too. Let's give him a hand.[332.27][332.27](Applause) Thank you. Our next recognition, I think, is going to be a great big one. It's for the Olathe East Cross Country Team, with Coach Tony Bosarth and Principal Dr. Tom Berry. Please come forward. Try not to trip over the camera. Tony told me he had 37 young ladies who went out for cross-country. I don't know if all of them are here tonight, but I think as many as possible could come. Okay, we would like to congratulate the 2006 Kansas 6A Champion Cross Country Team.[400.02][400.02](Applause) Is there someone else who's supposed to come up here? Come on down.[423.53][423.53](Laughter) Come on. This is the first cross-country team in Olathe history to win a state title.[431.21][431.21](Applause) The team won six Invitational Meets this year, and off the course, they have a 3.7 grade point average, and are involved in community service and a wide range of other activities, including student government, other sports, and vocal and instrumental music, which is pretty awesome. That sounds like a busy schedule. Coach Tony Bosarth was just named the 2006 Girls' Cross Country 6A Coach of the Year.[470.12][470.12](Applause) And Coach, would you like to say a couple of words?
Do you want me to introduce them? I'd just like to introduce the young ladies here, rather quickly. Riley Whittenberger. Amanda Miller. Amanda and Riley were both seniors this year. Riley was an All-Sunflower League Runner, Amanda was All-State. Darcy Miller. Darcy also won All-State Honors. Kara Bartles. Lana Thompson, who was also on Sunflower. Courtney Shippers, another one of our senior captains, ran at State. Kaylee Hagaman, another senior captain. Casey Epps, who won All-Sunflower Honors. Stacy DeSalle. Jordan Knoll. Lena Hollis. I just blanked.[534.41][534.41](Laughter) Sarah Kearns, another senior captain. I'm so sorry. Natalie King, another one of our senior captains. Breeve O'Hatty. Brooke Frazier. Brenda Ellis. Katie Rowe. Jamie Winters. Vicky Baynan. And then Assistant Coaches Glenn Daniels and Shanna Hicks.[560.04][560.04](Applause) I'm so sorry, Sarah. Sorry, Sarah, that was stage fright.[571.04][571.04](Laughter) When I looked over our girls today, one of the things that hit me, if you look at the Olathe School District's guiding principles, it talks a lot about the partnership between students, parents, and teachers. And if you look at the parents that we have in the back here, and the support that they have given the kids and the team, and then the great coaching that these kids got from Glenn and Shanna, both on and off the course, and then the effort that these young ladies put in in the class, and the effort, the honesty, I really felt that this is the finest that Olathe's School District has to offer. If you want to see what is best in Olathe, this is what is best in Olathe, and it's
Coach Tony told me that he's planning on winning several, the team winning several more times, so that he can get real comfortable behind the microphone.[649.12][649.12](Laughter) Okay, we'd like to recognize the family members who are here. Either stand, or if you're already standing, please wave your hands.[669.32][669.32](Applause) Our next recognition is going to be for one of our teachers, Scott Calder, from Olathe North. We'll ask him to come forward, and Olathe North Principal, Dr. Connie Heinan, if she's There she is. Scott is among 11 teachers at Olathe North who are earning their ELL, English Language Learner endorsement, through a grant administered by Kansas State University. Scott has been teaching English in our district for 20 years, and is beginning his second year as an ELL teacher. I asked him why, after all those years, he decided to become an ELL teacher, and he said he felt it was because he felt he was not meeting the needs of a valuable resource in our schools and our community, and that is the students who are non-native speakers. He was selected to join K-State, to join one of their professors in making a presentation at the National Closing the Achievement Gap Summit in Washington DC last month. Scott talked about the techniques of front-loading vocabulary activities to ELL readers to prepare them for reading rigorous grade-level literature, because the philosophy is that they should be getting the same rigorous education as all the other students. The conference showcases the best practices in the United States, and Scott said he benefited by being able to talk with teachers from across the country who face the same challenges that we do, particularly with regards to meeting the pressures of No Child Left Behind. He's obviously a teacher that we should all be very proud of. Please join us in congratulating him.[790.32][790.32](Applause) Do you have any family members here, Scott? Scott, do you have any family members here?
No.
Now, we'd like to recognize Bonnie Swayd, Chisholm Trail Junior High Counselor, and her husband Mick, and her principal, Bill Weber. If he's here, please come forward. Is Bill not, if Bill's not here, Jan, could you come forward? Dr. Jan Heinan is our Director of Middle-Level Education. NAMI Greater Kansas City, which is a local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, has recognized Bonnie Swayd, who's the school counselor at Chisholm Trail Junior High, and her husband, Mickey, with the Suicide Awareness Family Support Award. NAMI Greater Kansas City honored the couple at an awards presentation November 16th. Each year, NAMI Greater Kansas City recognizes people in the community who have had a positive influence in the field of mental health, awareness, and advocacy. By unanimous vote, the awards committee selected Bonnie and Mickey Swayd as the recipients of the Family Support Award for 2006. Bonnie and Mickey have spent a tremendous amount of time helping to start Suicide Awareness Survivor Support, a bi-state not-for-profit organization, and they also facilitate a support group for those who have lost a loved one to suicide, and they've been involved with coordinating a community suicide awareness and remembrance walk in partnership with NAMI and others. This is our opportunity to recognize two people with very caring hearts. You can't leave without getting your picture taken, Bonnie.[932.00][932.00](Laughter) Now, we'd like to recognize Dennis Burkett, Olathe South High School, and Jeff Zimmerman, Ravenwood Elementary School, and their administrators, Candy Birch from Olathe South and Tanya Channel from Ravenwood. We were first going to congratulate Dennis and Jeff for being chosen to represent the Olathe School District in the 2007 Kansas Horizon Awards Program. Then, we just learned that they have been selected as the state winners for the Kansas Horizon Award. To be considered, teachers must have completed a year of teaching, and they have to submit an essay on instructional strategies used in their classrooms and advice they would give to a first-year teacher. Principals also submit a letter of recommendation. Dennis teaches chemistry at Olathe South and is known for his great sense of humor, his ability to inspire respect in both students and colleagues, and his ever-present smile. Jeff is a phys ed teacher at Ravenwood Elementary, and Tanya says he's the most innovative PE teacher she's known in 33 years of education. His instructional strategies are engaging for students, and he reinforces the math and reading goals with every class he teaches. As I said earlier, not only are these two gentlemen the district finalists, they have now been named winners at the state level. Any family members here?
Oh.
Would you like to stand, please?[1038.32][1038.32](Laughter) Thank you. Josh Anderson, I would ask you now to come forward with your Principal, Dr. Gwen Pass. In October, we honored Josh as the Regional Finalist for Kansas Teacher of the Year, and tonight, we're delighted to recognize him as the Kansas Teacher of the Year, state Josh teaches English and coaches debate at Olathe Northwest High School, has been teaching for 10 years, four of those in Olathe, and one of the many things he does to keep parents in touch with their students' education is to send a weekly newsletter to parents telling them about the past week's lessons and the coming week's assignments, which I'll bet the kids really love, with suggested topics for dinner conversation. He's also very proud of his debate students and has led the Olathe Northwest Varsity Debate Team to a number-one state ranking. He will spend the next year traveling the state in his Kansas Teacher of the Year car, talking to people about the value of public education and talking to teachers about the importance of what they do every day. As he said in his acceptance speech, "He is prepared to work tirelessly as an advocate for our children, our teachers, and our communities," and he said, "My message will be clear: Reject the politics of divisiveness, articulate our shared values, and celebrate our common goal for common ground." Any family members or fans here?[1185.23][1185.23](Laughter) Our next recognition is for the Board of Education. I won't make you come down here. And Rita Lyon, our Executive Director of Technology. The Board of Education has a lot to be proud of in its efforts to promote and support technology, both for student learning and to facilitate communication with the community. Now, the district's innovative use of technology has captured national attention. Olathe District Schools ranks 5th among large school districts in the country when it comes to being technology proficient, according to the Center for Digital Education and the National School Boards Association. The Center for Digital Education, say that five times fast, surveyed school districts from 26 states and then ranked participants on how the school boards and their districts apply information technology to better engage the local community and constituents, and improve the service, delivery, and quality of education to public schools. The district was recognized during an awards presentation in Dallas November 8th. Rita Lyon, Executive Director of Technology, has been instrumental in the success of the district's technology tools and services. Those tools include the district's website, the Channel 18 and Website Board Meetings and Agendas, the online agenda and supporting documents available through Board Docs, school websites, parent online access to grades, attendance, and assignments, emergency school notifications through text caster and digital classrooms. So congratulations to Rita and Dr. All and the members of the Board of Education.[1288.00][1288.00](Applause)
I'd like to add one comment. Part of the smooth transition for Board Docs and our electronic format for going paperless as a board and sharing that information out to our community, the Board packets electronically, also goes to our Clerk of the Board, Betty Carpenter, because it's, this is her project, that specific project was one that she managed for us over a couple of years, and she made it very smooth, and I want to recognize her in this as well.[1321.04][1321.04](Applause)
You should stand close to Betty, so she can be in the picture.[1335.43][1335.43](Laughter)
No, no.
Now, we'll recognize our 2006 Citizens Education Academy graduates. I'm going to ask Dr. Bob Hull to come forward. He's their, the Dean of the Citizens Education Academy. And the graduates are Carol Beaver, Leslie Boyd, Diane Costello, Dave Darby, Pam Hertrider, Nancy Hughes, Julie King, Deb Madden, Kathy Mangino, Heather Skunover, Jeff Stewart, Janet Siegler, and Bonnie Zimmerman. A very distinguished-looking group. The Citizens Education Academy was organized in 2003 for the purpose of providing information about the business of the school district. Participants agreed to attend six two-hour sessions in which they meet Board Members and the Superintendent, as well as many department leaders, and study the issues related to governance, teaching and learning, business and finance, human resources, operations and maintenance, crisis management, and a variety of other topics. Now, they're ready to walk across the stage and receive their diplomas. Dr. Hull, would you like to say a congratulatory word?
One word, congratulations.[1420.11][1420.11](Laughter) A outstanding, dedicated group. As you know, we had some spirited discussion, lots of information, and you folks just did an outstanding job, and thank you for what you have accomplished and how you are going to help us in the future. So, congratulations.
Do we have any family members here? All right, please stand.[1483.54][1483.54](Applause) Okay, son, please stand.[1493.04][1493.04](Applause) Anybody else?
We have our wonderful coordinator, Joanne Hyatt.
Did we miss anyone?
Dave.
Oh, where is he? Oh, stand up, Dave. This is Deb's husband.[1515.23][1515.23](Applause) Okay. Thank you. And Bob, why don't you stay up here? Because next is our successful 2006 United Way Campaign. The committee members are Carrie Hazel, Jim Ader, Carolyn Pickering, Connie V. Brock, Nancy Cheatham, and Dr. Bob Hull, and the presentation team, Jennifer Canalee and Joan We have some special guests here tonight, Jennifer and Joan. To recognize our district and our United Way Campaign Committee, Olathe School District employees contributed almost $100,000 to this fall's United Way Campaign, placing the district at the top of the list in campaigns for school districts in a six-county area. Those contributions will support important programs in our community, including the School Plus Before and After School Program at three of our elementary schools. Several members of this team, including Committee Chair, Dr. Bob Hull, are serving for their at least ninth consecutive year. Is that right? Ninth or 10th? And this is Jennifer Canalee, to make some comments and to present an award.
Thank you, Laura Lee. I am very pleased to be here on behalf of the Board of Directors of our United Way in Johnson County and the agencies that we provide funding for, to say thank you to this wonderful committee that has done this for so many years. The Olathe School District and United Way has a very long history together, and over the past five years, Olathe District employees have raised almost $400,000 for our programs that we support through United Way. Thank you, Dr. Hull. Nancy Cheatham's not here tonight, but the rest of the gang, Carolyn, Connie, Jim, Carrie, and Dr. Hull. Not only did you go over your goal last year by $10,000 and win the First Annual Johnson County School District of Caring Award, but this year, you set a goal of $85,000 and blew it away with an astounding $97,000. So, therefore, I am very pleased to present, once again, for the second year in a row, this award.
That's an awesome-looking award.
Well, a lot of celebrations. On behalf of the Board, congratulations to all of tonight's recipients. Our next agenda item deals with public comments. At each regular meeting, the Board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that the individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The Clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comment to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded, for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotaped, recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. We have one person that has registered to speak to the Board. Mr. Mike Brown, please.
It's a good thing all those people out there were seeking It's a good thing all those people out there were seeking recognition and not seeking to comment. My name is Mike Round, and my address is 13234 Long Street, Overland Park, and I have two children in the Olahtha School District, Isaac, who is in second grade, and Marissa, who is in fourth grade. And I'd like to briefly talk tonight about the Bond Task Force Recommendations Report. And as I've gone over this report now very many times, and I've watched many Board meetings on the Internet, which I think is a very great feature, I'm struck by the gap between how much good stuff is in here and the actual little progress that I've perceived being made towards a consensus, be that for or against, all or part of the recommendations. But rather than talk about what's in here, which others have done so well, I'd instead like to talk about a couple things that are not in here that I think would help me make a better understanding of the issues and the context of the recommendations. The first is growth. We've heard so much about it, 1,000 students this year, expected growth for three decades. But there seems to be very few specifics about this growth in this report. For example, where is this growth expected area-wise? By how much each year? Is it 1,000 per year, or does it tail off after a certain period of time? What are the projections of moving these kids through the district with and without the sixth and ninth grade issues? What are the ramifications of all these scenarios if kindergarten became fully funded? I'd like to see that in this report. The second item is a philosophy of maintenance for existing facilities. We focus a lot on the word equity, yet two schools in particular apparently are in need of $10 million alone for needed repairs. I ask myself, well, how did this happen if equity were a driving virtue? Immediately fixing these schools may sound like the right thing to do, but what about the other schools built in the 1950s or the 60s? A new school will almost by definition be different than an old one. I'm not saying that's bad, but striving for equity says it is. If that's what everybody means, then there must be a philosophy of maintenance to ensure equity for all and not ad hoc solutions. So I'd like to see a philosophy of funding maintenance in the report. Finally, the last item I'd like to see is more logic to the sixth and ninth grade reconfiguration. This seems to me to be an excellent solution to two key issues, growth and academic excellence. Yet it seems to have dominated discussions over the last few months, and I ask myself why. We were told in the August Task Force presentation, a majority of parents and educators were in favor of moving sixth and ninth grades because of advanced courses for the kids. And if this is the case, how can it be that there seems to be such great division on this issue? Part of the problem may be what the data in this report actually does say. Surveyed about how to increase opportunities, an overwhelming percentage of building leadership teams and administrators proposed revised sixth and ninth grade realignment. Site councils, however, only by a slight majority recommended the same solution, also highly favoring bringing in content specialists to the elementary schools. Now, it may be that this is not a practical solution, be it resource-wise, cost-wise, anything. And the building leadership teams, the administrators know this. They know the logistics and the personnel involved, and they know it's not practical, and therefore, that's why the overwhelming majority voted for the sixth and ninth grade realignment. But this knowledge gap needs to be closed, which I believe can be done simply. It's been said earlier that recommendations like these in this booklet involve change, and people are resistant to change. I, however, disagree. I believe, given explanation and understanding, reasoned decisions can be made, and change is then comfortable. In this regard, I'd like to see, in the design phase of this process, as I understand it, three things additionally: more information on growth projections, a philosophy of building maintenance, and more logic to the sixth and ninth grade reconfiguration recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Round. Do we have anyone else wishing to make public comments? Seeing none, we'll move back to our, I think it was 2.03, with Mr. Deener. Would you come back up to the podium, please? Sorry, that was 2.04, on budget development. Are there any questions or comments from Board members concerning budget development at this point?
Mr. Deener, on the 31% local option budget, just for clarification, that requires the vote of a community.
That is correct.
Thank you for keeping us on track with the budget, and once again, a very complex subject, and thanks for holding on to the rope. I do appreciate that in a difficult situation. The cash reserves that we show now are really at one of two points. That would be a low point, and we would expect that to then increase in January when that infusion comes in. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in fact, I think in talking with Mr. Otting, it will hopefully improve just in the next couple of weeks when we're going to receive not only a general fund but a special education, large revenue coming in from the state during this month.
And I look back on our budget approval, and I know that this will really result in a series of discussions amongst the Board here. When we took a bit of a leap of faith on loosening the purse strings to the cash reserves, and we said that when we got back to the end of May of next year, we would look and see if that comfort level was still there with us, or whether or not we felt like we needed to take a step back. I think it's important, from my perspective, given all the initiatives that we have, particularly with the bond initiatives coming up, and I'm mainly talking here to the Board, that I would not be initially in support of adding another 2% to the cash reserve, simply because we took the contingency reserve up by 2%, which I support. But I don't really see where, if we have to dip into that on isolated occurrences, that that really puts us at risk. I think, though, that's somewhat of a moot discussion as we really wait and see next May where we will end up. And I think that we'll be in a good position there, but that's just speculation at this point. So I give that to you, Mr. Deener, because I know that you do have planning that you need to do. And I guess I would ask Dr. All, as we work through the budget planning session, January through March, do we envision having special meetings for that, or what is really the best forum for the Board to give input back to the staff?
First of all, I think we can do this in several ways. You should feel welcome to send those, any individuals, to me, individual perspectives, and I'd be glad to kind of collate that together and share that back so the entire Board would have some of the input that's coming in, and then we could come back and try to address that at the next meeting in some format, because you're probably going to see, Gary, at every, almost every Board meeting from now on, this will be an ongoing topic. So it's not something that'll go away, and then, you know, three months from now, it will pop back up. So I think in terms of the first step would be input on if there's any ideas you have that you'd like us to take a look at, you know, both in including in budgeting or changing in that from an initiative point of view, that's one. And then, secondly, any additional thoughts you have about where you'd like to see us be, you know, in our planning, we can do that. I would like to reserve making a commitment to a special meeting at this point. I have a sense that we're going to need one as we get a little bit later in the spring, but I'm not sure unless the Board would desire that, that we're at a point, unless you think that we would have a lot to talk about just yet as we go forward. I'm open to, you know, any different opinion on that. I don't know if I'm answering your question exactly the way you ask it.
You are, and I totally agree with that. I think just submitting information to you that can then be disseminated amongst the Board, and maybe that culminates in a special working session at some point down the road is a very logical approach.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Board?
Mr. Deener, the million that we took out, that came out of our 6% contingency reserve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So are we going to be able to put that back in in January? Go back to the 6%? In other words?
I think that that possibly could be done, but it might just have to be taken out then later in the year. So Mr. Otting and I will work together. Probably we'll leave it the way it is until we have a better feel for what the year-end might look like in May and June. In other words, one of the things that we don't want to do is spend time journal entering all over the place our expenditures from one fund to the next fund and then back again throughout the year just to make certain funds look pretty, so to speak. So probably not. But I don't know, Mr. Otting, do you have any thoughts on whether or not you think that would be a good thing to do?
If the anticipation at the end of the year is going to end up the same result, then, you know, there's really no reason to move it around, but we can obviously...
This is a question that you may not be able to answer, but if we have a successful bond election and if we were going to sell those bonds and we were looked at historically from a financial standpoint, and the bond rating folks looked at us and said we went through most of the year without being in our statutory cash reserve, would that have an impact on our bond rating?
That's hard to say, but historically, the approach that we've been receiving in the past, that the more cash balances you have is, the more advantageous it potentially could be to a more positive rating. That's very subjective, though.
I mean, the bond writers will look at the holistic amount of cash reserves, and I think they would be indifferent as to what's in contingency reserve, because, I mean, last year we had it all in one category, and therefore, there wasn't necessarily that distinction that was visible. And so we've separated it out this year, but at the end of the day, the cumulative effect is really insignificant.
I'm not going to say that that isn't correct, but I do believe that they have always asked, what is the state authority for the contingency? And for us to be able to say that we've reached that maximum, I think is always a very, it's received very positively. So, I mean, in all honesty, another way of answering your question, Mr. Parker, is if we knew that we were going to have a bond election in February or March, then I think we probably would work very hard to make sure that at the point in time when we had that hearing or that discussion with our, with Stanton and Poor and Moody's, we probably would make sure that that was 6%.
So what I'm hearing is that it's, they don't look at what the contingency fund is all year round, they just look at it at a point in time.
Probably at the point in time when they're asking the questions for us to be able to see that, yes.
And I still think, if we look at the facts, that our cash reserves are very healthy, relatively speaking. That's not a negative. It's just, it's a reality. And so my view is that we're still in good shape as we project out towards the end of the budget year. And, Mr. Deener, if your views are different than that, welcome to hear your thoughts.
I would only say that for us to have to work with the budget and to work with special funds simply so that we could pay the bills is not something that I would say is the, in the best financial stability of the district. I believe that the operating funds and the cash balances that are in those operating funds and dependent funds should be able to pay the way without having to dip into contingencies.
And one way maybe to solve that, and don't take this wrong, is to take the contingency reserve back to a lower level, which we've historically operated, and put that money back into those cash reserves. You know, so I think either way, the end result is all the same, that we've got money to meet those needs, and it's really a one-month issue. We'll wait till next month, but I think that we'll see that we'll be well back up in our cash reserve level.
Gary, I wanted to ask a question. Was this an unintended occurrence, or did you anticipate that we might be this, in this situation?
We know that during November, December are always going to be our most difficult times, and we also realize that the cash balance of all those funds that we've grouped together, the dependent, had cash balances that were much lower than they had ever been before. Traditionally, the Special Ed Fund, which has had dollars in it, once again, that were probably larger than were necessary because of the sales tax issue. And we can't forget about the fact that there was a reason for that. When they were reduced from 13 million to almost 3 million this last year, that was quite a drain on our ability to maintain that cash flow. Typically, we do not transfer dollars in support of the Special Education Fund until perhaps after January. And I need to help the public understand that it has nothing, we're not talking about anything about our desire to support the special education program. We're just simply talking about a fund that historically is the largest of those dependent funds that has maintained that cash balance reserve for us in the past. And because it was reduced to the level that it was, it's had a tremendous impact on the operating, the general fund and the supplemental fund in its support, so to speak. And like I said, really, in December, we are going to receive, in fact, do you know what that amount is, Randy? About four or five million dollars from the state this month. That is not coming any too early to help, you know, balance that out. But, you know, we haven't received any state funding from Special Ed for the last couple months, and so that's why it's necessary.
And then the 47 million that we said was really our floor, what we needed to have as a minimum to support ourselves, we're still well above that. So in the whole perspective, we're in decent shape?
Now, I'm not sure what 47 you're referring to there. Is there something, a slide that we could go back to look at?
That was the highs and the lows, if I'm remembering correctly, that we looked at last year when we took the peaks and the valleys and said, okay, this is where we need to set our minimum just to support our cash flow needs.
Yeah, and I guess what we're saying now is that that probably was pretty tight. And I think that that was under the assumption of having like 100% cash flow. And what we're saying now is that that may be a little unrealistic if we're really going to be able to maintain operations without having to dip into contingencies.
Gary, would it be your intention to, I guess, bring this to our attention on a monthly basis, ongoing, and I'm not suggesting that we would micromanage, I'm suggesting that we need to be aware of the implications because of the change in our decision this year?
Uh-huh, and that'd be, yes, but that's, it's always going to be available on the Treasuries Report. The Treasuries Report does reflect an expenditure out of the contingency reserve, and if we were able to replenish that, then we would be able to see that on the next month or two months from now, Treasury Report. But like I said, we probably will not make that change until the end of the year to see if we really can replenish it, or if, and at that point in time, we could have a Board discussion in the May-June timeframe as to how important is it to us that we replenish that to the 6%? Or how important is it to us that we have those other cash balances for the year-end, June 30th timeframe? But yes, definitely the Board will have an opportunity for that discussion, once we know more at the end of the year, closer to the end of what we're really looking at.
And has there been a time, Gary, in which the state has not been, has not been able to support the funding that has been traditionally given to districts?
Yes, and that's the biggest concern. If we're going to get 4 million from Special Ed and another 10 million for just the operating funds, and there's $14 million there, and there's been twice in the past when we have received notification that the state is simply not going to make that payment until January. But guaranteed, we're going to make December 30th payroll. And if we have a $14 million swing and we have $7 million sitting in contingency, that then isn't even going to be enough to cover. So there have been instances in the past that would make us reflect on how, you know, how comfortable we really are in being, in going into a scenario where our 100% philosophy is only going to bring us down to zero for cash flow purposes. And the only support that's left is the contingency reserves of being roughly that $8 million. It's a lot of money, but the potential for a large swing for something at the state level to postpone a payment is there. It's a reality.
Any other questions or comments from Board members?
Just like to reaffirm my thanks for your constant efforts and outstanding job you do to keep this complex subject in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Mr. Poland, I think we need to recognize that you have an upcoming birthday, so happy birthday to you, Mr. Poland, coming soon.
Thank you.
We'll move on to action consent items, and these are, any item on the consent agenda may be removed for separate discussion. As an action item upon request by the superintendent or a Board member, we'll entertain a motion for adoption of all of our consent agenda items, unless there's an item you would like to have discussed separately.
Mrs. Wilhelm, I have a brief question around 5.11, facility use request on the Hershey Track and Field Program.
Are there other requests or information concerning or comments concerning? And I have a couple also. Dr. All, do you?
No, but we do have, when you're ready, we do have Jim Aeter here to address that particular item. He's our Director of District Activities and Athletics.
I would appreciate some brief discussion about the proposed school calendar for '07, '08.
And, Dr. Benikowski, are you prepared to do that?
And I'm going to just have a couple of questions, one on 5.05, and also 5.08, which is the school calendar, so we'll combine those questions.
Mr. Aeter?
Yes.
Just curious, is there a cost to the district for this?
The only cost that we would have would be to open the facility that day, and the person that would be there to supervise it. Everything else is covered by the Hershey Track and Field Program. They bring all the equipment in, they do all the volunteers, so it's just the, basically from 10 to 2, that four to six hours, we would have somebody staff that facility.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Aeter. School calendar, Ms. Ashley.
I was just wanting to inquire about, and this shows how old I am, the noticeable shift in the calendar where school is starting much earlier. And it's getting out much earlier to the point where there is virtually not much left in August, particularly as far as staff is concerned. So, my inquiry goes to knowing that you work with NEA to negotiate this, if this is a proposal that everybody's in agreement with.
Have you noticed I already commandeered my colleague here from Professional Counsel, Larry Spotts, our president of our local Latha NEA? Certainly, this is a collaborative process in developing the calendar, a lot of inputs, surveying, and an opportunity to really, in this case, build a fairly parallel calendar to what we have this year. So, Larry, if you wanted to address a little bit about the perceived starting earlier and ending later?
It does seem that way, but it's essentially the same day, just a different date of the year. And it does keep the semesters equal, which is a high priority for staff, especially at the secondary level because of the semester classes that are present there. And that way, the curriculum can be presented in a like fashion for the same kind of course that is offered in a semester.
This type of calendar seems to be a concern for parents, or are the parents adapting to this schedule and, you know, scheduling their activities around this type of schedule? And I guess one other observation I would have, I hear frequent comments from parents about the extended period of time that students are out of class between the first and second semester or holiday break.
We, again, of course, do a surveying to get input. We had made a modification, I can't even remember when, on the calendar to do more of breaks that were together rather than spread out through the year, instead of having a Friday here or a Monday there, where we're doing professional development, things like that. And we had heard from our parents that that was extremely difficult, it was never a solid five-day week, and we'd rather have you collapse and then put them in one place so that we could plan around those days for professional growth, parent-teacher conferences, those type of things. So, I believe that if we changed back to where we spread them out throughout the year, we'd probably go back and have the concern in that area. So, it seems like, one way or another, you have some parents that are more comfortable with spreading them out. I have to say to you, some of our high school students are more comfortable with spreading them out, they say they need more four-day weeks to survive. But I think we made that as a reaction to our parents. And Larry, anything that you would add about our surveying from folks this year?
It truly is, when we had the days, professional development days spread out during, that was the complaint from parents. And then when you put them, there really was an overwhelming desire to lump them with the breaks. That way, you know, the break is one time versus several weeks during the year.
One thing I might add on the calendar for professional development is that it, we consider it a very high priority, that professional development for our staff members, in a sense, go throughout the year. It's not only an opportunity, we use summer for training, but when we're talking about school improvement, when we're talking about time for teachers to get together to focus on those data-driven instructional strategies, we need that throughout the year. And that was a significant commitment this district made some years ago. It's also one of those points recognized by standards and pores of the highly resource-effective districts that staff development was, as part of the calendar. And I think some people don't understand the importance of that training. We're somewhat limited in what we can do with training on the job because we have to get substitutes, and we're severely limited by what we can do there, nor do we want to pull out of the classroom. So, I just want to make that point about that distributed staff development time and why that's intentionally in the calendar the way it is.
Any other questions or comments concerning any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, we would entertain a motion for adoption of all our consent agenda items.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Motion made by Mr. Churchman and seconded by Dr. Drummond. Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
On to bids, contracts, and agreements at 6.0, action item. Are there any items for discussion or questions under this category? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to have the consent agenda under bid, bids, contracts, and agreements, a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve bids, contracts, and agreements as listed.
Motion made by Mr. Churchman and seconded by Ms. Ashley. Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to action items categorized as other. The board will consider the action items individually following a brief, if we need a re-presentation by staff. First is 7.01, location of Junior High Number Nine. Are there any questions or comments?
I believe Chris Grohlup is here tonight, and he could address any questions by the board on this topic for the location. If you recall, we have two sites that we currently own, this one in Latha and a second site in Lenexa, and so you received information about that of the two sites in the comparison. If you have any questions before taking action on this, he's here to address those.
Chris, I was wondering if you might be able to give us an estimate of what the enrollment would be at the two junior highs that would be impacted by the construction of Junior High Number Nine when the proposed open date of '09 is achieved? In other words, it's showing for the Blakely site that there would be 420 students on a proposed opening date of '09. What would be the anticipated enrollments then at Oregon Trail and Prairie Trail, regardless of any boundary changes?
Well, if everything grows the way I expect it to, which it hasn't quite yet, we would expect Prairie Trail to be about at 600 kids and Oregon Trail to be about at 600 kids as well. So, Oregon Trail will be about at its current level as it is now. Prairie Trail will be, would be at about 600 kids as well.
I guess I would have a question of Dr. All and of the board. If we might be able to proceed with, and I guess I should look at what the motion is, but if we could proceed with drawings for this school without making a commitment at this point in time for the open date of Junior High Number Nine? I guess I share some concerns about what our need is going to be at that point in time considering the relative slowdown in new construction in that part of the city.
Well, there is, I mean, there is that fact, but also the growth that's occurring in that area is also coming from the grades, the third, fourth, and fifth grades that are much larger than our seventh, eighth, and ninth grades currently are. And so, when you look at the growth at Prairie Trail, for instance, this is a school that we've done a lot of looking at, over two-thirds of its growth is going to come from next year, is going to come from the fact that next year's seventh-grade class is going to be significantly bigger than the departing ninth-grade class, and that's a trend that we're going to continue to see at both schools. So, even if growth, even if, even if another house wasn't built in Prairie Trail and Oregon Trail's attendance area, both of those schools are going to continue to grow because the kids are already in our system, they're already in our schools, they're just working their way up through the system.
Mr. Thomason, back to Ms. Ashley's question, because I think it's a pertinent one, just hypothetically speaking, if we were, to some point down the road here, decided to change locations, not to say that we would, the designs that we're going to embark upon would be portable, for the most part, over to an alternative site, would that not be correct?
For the most part. The actual design of the building would be movable from one site to another, it would be the site planning. That consists of probably about 20% to 25% of the drawings.
So, I share Ms. Ashley's concern from a number of different regards as to whether or not we've had all the necessary discussions we need to finalize all the specifics associated with this location and the ninth junior high and all the ramifications that come with it.
Dr. All, do you have comments, please?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments here. You know, you have two items, 7.01, which is the location of Junior High Site, for whatever time you want to open the next junior high, the ninth junior high. And the recommendation of staff is that we use the property at 127th Street and Lake Shore Drive. And I think we're pretty confident that that's where the next junior high should be, whether you open it in '09, 2010, whatever that year might be. And I think it would be helpful if we did need it by 2009 to have a location and to start the design work on that, or you're going to take that option off the table for you. And so, that's one piece, I think, we're asking for board action on tonight, is the location and get that settled. We've looked at the boundary scenarios for using that Collier Site, and, you know, we would be moving people past junior highs because the population, although you're going to need that site in the future, we think, it's not the density of population there yet that you're going to see between where Prairie Trail is and Oregon Trail right now and where all the growth is happening out there. So, that's the first issue. The second agenda item, 7.02, which is the Prairie Trail Junior High Enrollment Relief Plan, you know, we also had in there the recommendation for that relief from staff to you was that we believe you will need that junior high by 2009. If you decide that we don't need that by 2009, again, we will, we don't have a bond to pay for the ninth junior high, so you're going to have a little more data at the point that you would release and determine that date. But we also feel like if there's ever a hope to open it in 2009, we have to have a location, we have to start the design. We're just asking for the flexi, to give you the flexibility as a Board of Education to make a decision on growth. And I would invite any of you in to meet with Chris between now, in the next few weeks or month, a couple of months even, you've got the time to do that, to really get a handle on what he's talking about and growth in that area. You know, maybe you won't need it till 2010, you're probably talking about a year swing there. We think right now you're still going to need it in 2009.
And Dr. All, can you just briefly elaborate on how we handle the cost for this design on the interim and how much we're talking about here?
I'm going to do my best on this, but Mr. Houghton can add comments if he wants. I think the initial part of the design process, what we're trying to do is cut some time, you know, do the design while we're striving to figure out when we're going to have a bond election and what's going to be included in that. And so, as he told me, this initial design phase they would be asking for on that particular site would be about $150,000, and he believes that's within existing budgets that he has that he could make that work. At some point around July in the summer, if we go to a more of a phase, once we know whether, when we're having a bond election and that process, we could take out of capital outlay some additional dollars in that next budget cycle to fund some additional design and then eventually pay that back out of the bond if we needed to.
And I think that's a prudent thing to do, just hypothetically speaking. That doesn't lock us into a site, not to say we aren't going to accept staff's recommendation, but if for some reason we elected to move, that design money would not have been wasted.
I think the initial part that they're talking about probably would not, but we'd have to have good reason why not to use that. If you approved that site tonight, my hope was we wouldn't change that site location. I don't think there's going to be anything that changes in the data that would cause you to move that site to Lenexa that I'm aware of. I mean, Chris, can you think of anything that I'm not thinking of that would cause us to change the preferential location?
Not really, because, I mean, the number of subdivisions, the growth that's projected is all going to be greater in the western part than the north. Because if you're, when you're looking at the Collier Junior High Site, what you're really looking at is a junior high to serve, to be quite frank, Lenexa, the area north of K-10 Highway. If you're going to move Cedar Creek, and then you're going to get into that situation again where the, where that junior highs boundaries would wrap around Prairie Trail, and you'd have kids, you'd have parents driving by Prairie Trail to get up to the Collier Junior High Site. So, the growth, growth is slowing in all parts of the area, and especially in Lenexa. Lenexa's housing market is a much smaller market, they've got a much narrower product line than in Latha. They're down to building about 10 houses a month in Lenexa versus the 50 to 60 houses a month that are being built in Latha. And all of Latha's houses that are being built are in this area that would be served by a junior high on the Blakely Site.
I just want to clarify with the fellow board members and with Dr. All that my question centered around the proposed opening date and not the site selection. I do agree that the Blakely Site is the superior site, and I just want to make that clarification.
Other questions or comments relevant to the site for Junior High Number Nine?
I would second Mrs. Ashley's motion, if she did make one, on the site. Second?
It has been moved by Ms. Ashley and seconded by Dr. Drummond that we approve the selection of the site for Junior High Number Nine, the Blakely Site. Mrs. Carpenter?
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
That motion carried? Okay. Dr. All, would you go ahead with Prairie Trail Junior High Enrollment Relief Plan? And we have that on our screens, if you want to pull that up, and that's 7.02.
I would just comment based on some of this discussion that with Mr. Churchman and Ms. Ashley, that in this plan, I said, "Open Junior High Nine in 2009, 2010." I think that could be postponed, I think the motion or the action I was asking for to prove this out as outlined. I would like to be able to come back and give you the additional information that you might feel that you need to be comfortable with '09. But I do think the couple of key pieces here that are important to make the decision on is that, one, we are asking that in the '08-'09 school year, that we develop that comprehensive boundary plan for the new Woodland Elementary School that's to open in '08. And that, secondly, we chose that year so that it would be in conjunction with looking at that whole area that might be impacted by boundaries with Woodland as well as the issues related to Prairie Trail and the neighborhoods that had been on transfer from Santa Fe Trail to Prairie Trail. So, we would work on that late this spring and early this fall and come back with a recommendation to the board in that area. At the same time, if we have the approval to start the design process in this motion, then that gives you the flexibility over the next several months to determine whether '09 is still viable or whether you think that that needs to be pushed to 2010. '09 is vi, is still viable, or whether you think that that needs to be pushed to 2010. So, I can live with a little wiggle room on that, but I do think we need to know when we're going to work on boundaries.
So, Dr. All, then in, in regards to 7.02, the opening sentence on number one, "Open Junior High Number Nine in 20, 2009, 10," we could just leave that to be, date to be determined based upon a further input and further study by the board?
I would be very comfortable with that.
Yeah, but that, that being said, then I'd make that motion to approve your, uh, plan as outlined, with that one change.
Second?
The motion has been made by Mr. Parker and seconded by Mr. Churchman to amend 7.202 to state that the opening Junior High Number Nine be left open for future determination, otherwise the remaining information stands as addressed. Is that correct? Okay. Mrs. Carpenter?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes. We'll move on to Action Item 7.03, Special Board Meeting Cancellation. Is there any discussion on action to cancel special board meeting on December 14?
Do we have to return part of our pay?
You keep trying.
It's really in honor of his birthday, so...
Do I hear a motion for this recommendation to cancel a special meeting on December 14?
So moved?
Second?
Motion made by Dr. Drummond and seconded by Mr. Poland. Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes. Motion passed. Move on to 7.04, Charter School Petition. Dr. All.
If you'll recall, we received a charter school petition that was acknowledged by the board at the November 2nd board meeting, and that petition was to request an opportunity to create a public special education charter school in Alatham. At that time, then, the board determined that staff would come back and work with the board on a process to address charter school applications because we didn't have a process in place for this statute that was in place. And at the year November 16th, special board meeting, you adopted that process, and also the board directed the superintendent, staff, as well as taking input from board members to determine whether or not the petition, the first step in that process to determine whether or not the petition was complete in respect to all of the key elements that were required by statute and, and were required by the state's rubric. And so, that has been done, based on board input and staff analysis. In addition, there has been assistance from the Kansas State Department of Education for technical assistance on this matter as well, and it's been a significant learning process as we've gone forward. But that analysis is complete, and I would just use that as my opening comments for the board in terms of the document and your motion in respect to this petition.
Are there any questions or comments by board members? Do we have a recommendation concerning the charter school petition?
With respect to the petition to create a charter school submitted by the Kansas Center for Children, a public education, a public special education charter school, I move that the Board of Education find that the petition is incomplete and that the petitioner be notified.
Second?
I would just add a couple of comments in this. As we reviewed all these materials, as I reviewed these, the staff put in just an incredible amount of work, as did the petitioner, to try to get the charter school started, and this is our first trip through it, and so it was a lion's share of work to try and get there. And even though I think the petitioner did a very, very good job of putting some material together, there are just a lot of gaps. And as I review the different pieces, I think there are somewhere between 25 and 30 different sections we had to review in this, and I believe all but one of those sections we found incomplete. We didn't have enough material, didn't quite understand things well enough to, to make an informed decision. So I would very much concur with the, the motion that's been made in the second, that this be determined not ready for us to accept at this point.
Any other comments or questions concerning this motion? Thank you, Dr. Drummond. Motion again made by Mr. Churchman and seconded by Mr. Parker.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
So we will direct the superintendent to return the charter school application and the information related to the elements that are incomplete to the petitioners so that they may have an opportunity to, to respond and to resubmit the application. We'll move on to future action items, that's 8.0. These are items that may require future action. They include state and federal legislative positions, student fees and miscellaneous charges, Madison Place boundary update, addition of new curriculum and curriculum changes, many educational student trips, Head Start policies, documents, and their RIF grant application, and enrollment relief options for Countryside Elementary and Board Goals. Are there any items on the future action that you have questions or comments about board members?
Mrs. Wilhelm, I'd like to talk about the state and federal legislative positions briefly, and also make a comment about student fees and miscellaneous charges.
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Churchman, and we'll kind of work our way down the item list if there are other questions or comments.
First, I have a question for staff. Under funding, item number three, the bilingual and special education, it says the state should increase the funding for additional costs of these mandated programs. Can we add to this specifically what increase we're looking for, or what we would deem to be acceptable?
I think we could put some language in along those lines. The special ed funding was raised to, I believe, 92% of excess costs, which is a formula the state uses under Senate Bill 549, and it locks in at 92%. And obviously, it would be nice to get that to 100%, because anything less than 100% is, just has to be subsidized by the local district. In the case of bilingual, that gets back to the ELL instruction, and you heard earlier today some of the tremendous challenges that we have there, and obviously, we'd like to have that more fully funded so that we can meet the needs of those children.
Thank you.
Mr. Churchman, are, do you have, are you wanting more specificity for us to work on something there that gives a little more direction? That would be in the document or on to, just as part of our efforts of communication? Did you have anything clear in mind, or you want us to come back and try to do better?
Just wanting us to be as tangible as possible for the legislators so they can grasp what, exactly what it is that we would deem to be success under that.
We can try to work on that a little bit more.
Thank you. Item number four, under ancillary issues capers. Comment for the board, and Dr. George, I welcome any thoughts you have. The last sentence, "The board supports a COLA for recipient of capers benefits." You know, certainly, my view is that anybody that has a, a defined benefit would like to have an inflationary index to it. I, I don't believe that that's a realistic provision that would end up getting approved, and therefore, it would be my request that we strike that last sentence, and I welcome Item number four, under ancillary federal issues, states, "The board supports relief from the arbitrage provisions concerning school bond proceeds used for construction, renovation of schools, or acquisition of school sites and technology." I would offer to the board that we amend that to state, "As long as such relief is used for reimbursement to the taxpayers of the community." And Dr. George, if you have any thoughts on that, I'd, I'd welcome those as well.
No, that'd be fine. The, the challenge is, the, in that particular item is that the, the federal treasury has a concern about that issue, but we can certainly try to address, amend that a little bit, that relief would come back to the local district.
Thank you. I guess I would open up if there are any objections to the modification to the, the capers provision to the board.
Mr. Churchman on number four. I, I appreciate your sensitivity to that issue, and I appreciate that, that is, it's a legislative issue, but I, I think it's important for us to say to our teachers and to our retirees that we support them, and I would, I would continue to be supportive of having this provision in, in our policy statement, just to send the message that we want to support our teachers, especially as they labor for us and then go on to retirement. I think it's important that we have that there.
And I don't disagree with you on that, Mr. Parker. I think the, what we need to question is whether or not that would ever be approved, and if it detracts from the credibility of this document.
I might make a couple of comments. One, it is part of our existing policy, and so it would be removing something that's part of our existing legislative positions, and you may want to think about the, the messages there. The other part of that is, many states that do have a defined benefit do have some sort of a COLA provision, and, and we, we don't have one, and I don't know that we're going to get one right away, but there was some thought that, that we, if we don't advocate for it, we probably will never get it. But certainly, whatever the board would like to do, we will attempt to convey, convey that message to our legislators.
In the past, hasn't the legislator granted, from time to time, COLA, COLA changes, although it's not on an annual basis, but from time to time they do that? Maybe we, Mr. Churchman, we could change the language somewhat to say that we would be supportive of that in some fashion to allow the legislature the, the latitude to make that kind of decision, decision if they, they saw fit. I just don't think we should say we're not supportive of a COLA benefit at all. I understand that it's, it's a really a costly item, and I understand that it may never pass, but by the same token, that being said, I still think we need to be somewhat supportive in some form or fashion of that. Maybe this language is not appropriate, maybe we could just indicate that we know that's an issue for retirees, and we would encourage the legislature to entertain any possibility that was available for them to fund some type of COLA benefit for retirees.
And Dr. George, could you provide the board with a listing of those states that do have a inflation indices for their COLA, or for their capers?
I can try to get that for you, I don't have it here at my fingertips right now. The, what the state legislature in Kansas has done in the past, there have been occasions when they've issued a 13th check to recipients of capers, and it's usually about 50% of a normal check, and that was designed to recognize the fact that there was not a COLA and that many of the benefits were quite low, and this was a way that the state took some positive steps to try to address that in years past. Obviously, with the budget shortfalls shortly after 2000, they weren't able to do that, and they haven't done it the past several years. But that, that was done in the past.
Yeah, so the new information to me on other states, I wasn't aware of any states that had that provision, so that would be good information. Thank you.
Dr. George, are there other school districts that don't support a COLA for some form of moving toward the COLA, as far as you know?
I don't know. I would have to check with other school districts and see if they've taken a position one way or another on it. And, and we could do that, but I don't have that at my fingertips right now.
Mr. Churchman, in appreciation of your comments, and, and I understand that, could, would you be in agreement then if we'd asked Dr. George to craft this sentence, this, this position in a, a different light, to reflect that we would be supportive of some type of COLA benefit that the legislature may, may be able to fund? Kind of looking for some middle ground here.
Certainly be open to alternative language for this, just to look at it, and I want to be clear to staff, staff salaries to me is number one priority, one of the number one priorities in this district, and it, it needs to be an area where I won't be satisfied until Alatha's number one in Kansas, and we've made great progress there, so I'd certainly be open to any modifications.
One other question, and that's on the, I know we stated the bilingual and special education, the fund, the state should increase the funding for additional costs of these mandated programs. Mr. Deaner, and I know you may not have this at your fingertips, but do you know what that percentage cost increase has been for us over the, over the last few years? Because I know it's, it's an indirect reference to what we're going to look at as budget needs and future needs.
No, I don't have that information, but I can, we can look for that.
Just at some point, I would appreciate that, because it's certainly going to impact some districts more than others, and maybe we need to go back and look at, I don't know how specific we want to be. Again, if this is looking at coming from the Alatha District, that statement may need to be more specific for us. Thank you. Other questions or comments concerning state and legislative positions? Seeing none, student fees and miscellaneous charges? Mr. Churchman?
Just my only question here, we have some point in time when we could revisit these fees. I think last year we talked about, we needed to draw the line in the sand somewhere around the May timeframe, so if in our budget process we elect to open a discussion back on this, I assume we can still do that.
Actually, we do it at this timeframe so that the board can approve it in January so that we can start our planning and our documents and pamphlets and all the other informational information that's, that's being sent out in the springtime to our parents that reflects what these are. So, if the board wants to change something, I guess maybe we might be able to still in February, but the intent is to have this approved in January so that other people can do the steps that they need to in, involve these dollar amounts in their informationals.
Thank you.
Moving on, are there other, under future action items, other items for discussion? Ms. Ashley?
I had two questions in regard to the curriculum proposals. One is on 8.04 with the business curriculum. There's a reference made there to, and I forget the exact word that was used, but to relate the courses, to affiliate the courses with the 21st Century Business Curriculum. So I wanted a brief description on how many schools were including the 21st Century Business Curriculum, and just exactly what the intention of that comment is. Because I was under the impression that we only offered that 21st Century Business Curriculum at one of the high schools.
Rita, Ms. Ashley, the business, 21st Century Business and Entrepreneurship Program is an enhancement program that is offered at all four high schools.
So is that a similar type program then to our other 21st Century programs?
We have three enhancement program areas. One is Fine Arts, one is Business and Entrepreneurship, and the other one is the International Studies Program, all four of which are offered at all three, all, three of which are offered at all four high schools.
Thank you for that clarification. And then the other question I had was about 8.10, the pre-AP European history. Could someone provide us with an explanation of what a pre-AP curriculum class would be?
The advanced placement designation is usually reserved for 11th and 12th or junior and senior, and any of the vertical alignments that began at an earlier stage in the high school career are called pre-AP. What we've come to find is that the earlier that we can begin the preparation for this kind of a rigorous curriculum, the better the students perform on those advanced placement tests.
Ms. Ashley, we also have Maureen Donigan-
Mrs. Ashley, we also have Maureen Donigan, our social studies coordinator, that's available, if you had any other questions about the pre-AP European history, and she's available and could come up to the microphone as well. I, I think that Dr. Sanders answered most of my question, but the, the other question I would have is, I believe it's stated in the information we had that this was available for 11th and 12th graders, so if it's a pre-AP class, does that mean that sophomores could participate in this course?
Mrs. Donigan has led this process, a team process, to get to this point, so I'll have her answer that question.
Hi. Actually, this course is available for sophomores and is primarily targeted towards sophomores, but it would also be available to juniors and seniors if they would care to take the course.
Thank you. Other items for questions or comments? Mr. Parker?
Thank you. I have a question in regards to 8.18, I'm sorry, yeah, enrollment relief for Countryside. So we have another school that is in need of enrollment relief. Two questions in regards to, that I'd like staff to consider, looking at what are the possibilities of adding another classroom? Apparently, we need another classroom. What are the possibilities of that? And then, apparently, Walnut Grove is, has, has room, and I don't want anybody to say that I'm advocating moving anybody, but what I would like for us to, to look at is, is that, is that an option? Have we looked at that? Have we spoken with the parents? And I understand that there's a, quite a number of children there that are in the early childhood program, and so I wouldn't certainly advocate that, but if that was an option and we could make that work, would that be something that we could consider?
In regards to the one classroom, that's a one classroom for next year. It's a situation at Countryside where, due to its enrollment, it's going to be needing a classroom next year, another classroom in two years, and so it isn't just, they need one classroom to get by, they need, they've completely maxed out their space at Countryside. And really, it's came down to a choice of either moving a program that they need, which is the early childhood where pre-forced the students in that program or from the Countryside attendance area, or moving other students. The building just, there's no room to put another class in it with existing programs. And so we haven't gone and met with the parents yet. This was our first step, coming to the board, educating the board before going out, and meeting with the, with the parents next, after, after winter break.
So, so then you're saying that we need two classroom addition there?
I'm saying they need, it's actually need more than that. If you go back to the space survey that was done, it called for a need of eight additional rooms at Countryside. What we've proposed, in the, in the bond task force recommended an addition at Countryside, and looking at how big of an addition that could be. But right now, what we're looking at is trying to basically buy time until that addition could happen. I mean, the addition, obviously, the bond election isn't going to happen until next year, takes while to get the money, takes while to design the building. The addition couldn't physically happen until 2009, approximately. I guess Greg would be the one to be able to answer that, but...
So, Chris, what options are you taking back for discussions with the community?
Right now, staff is investigating the two options that were presented to the board, moving early childhood. Earl Martin, the director of elementary education, and Carol Affolder have been meeting to look at potential sites that, that program, the early childhood program, could be moved to. We're also have met with the principals at Countryside and Walnut Grove, and will be going out, and as I said, after Christmas, starting public meetings if, if it pleases the board to get public input on about, a potential boundary move.
Mr. Grelle, my concern is being able to obtain that information and disseminate it prior to the January board meeting. Is there latitude in the schedule, unless I'm misreading that?
It wouldn't be, I mean, we wouldn't be coming back to the January board meeting expecting you to make a boundary decision at that time. It would be more doing some investigation, meeting with site councils, looking at early childhood to see if, A, some, some of these possibilities that we're identifying right now are really possibilities or not.
Okay, thank you.
It would be important to get input from the communities before it came back for any kind of information from, to the board, is, is that not correct?
Obviously, before any decision was made, yes.
Thank you. Other future action items?
Well, staying with the Countryside topic, the conversation of adding additional classrooms to that site, with this being a Title I school, I thought that our goal was to keep those schools of a more modest size, so would that be a viable option for us?
To be honest with you, I mean, I can speak to it in terms of a facilities point of view, there are very few options space-wise in northeast Olahtha of what to do. As we, as we highlight in your report, there, the schools that surround, surround Countryside, Indian Creek is also a Title I school. It is fully utilizing all of its space, it's in its activity areas, its band room is in the PE storage room. Regency Place, you just put a four-room addition on it, and all those rooms are full. Walnut Grove has a little bit of space. Washington, which is across the interstate from this school, is also another Title I school, also heavily utilizing all of its space. And so really, the issue comes into, we've got students, we've got, and we need to have these programs, and it really becomes an issue of where can we find space to, for all this?
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Grelle? Thank you, Mr. Grelle. Any other items on future action items for questions or comments? I have one on 8.17 Head Start, their RIF program. My only question would be, there are three programs offered in that grant. One is short, called short, the other standard, the other extended. Our grant application talks about applying for the standard. Why are we not, I just, my question would be, why are we not looking at the extended, which allows more books to be put in the hands of those children?
I'll have to check with Kim Sell on that, and get an answer back to you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments concerning future action items? Okay, if not, we'll move on to 9.0, which is information, this, these are items that are written reports to inform the board on a variety of different topics. They include vertigation system, parent teacher conference report, the international language program that is being piloted at eight elementary sites, secondary supplemental literature selection process, the Jason Science and Math Grant Project, Alumni Association reorganization, and United Way 2006. Any fellow board members, do we have any questions or comments related to this material?
Mrs. Wilhelm, I have a question on 9.04.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Churchman.
Dr. All, I'd like your thoughts on, as I look at question number eight, which touches upon age appropriateness of the text, it seems like that's an area where there's the majority of the discussion around text selections, and would like to see a separate question that further expands upon that in our text selection form. Any thoughts on that, please?
I may want, which area are you looking at? Are you looking on the form, or are you looking on the policy? Are you looking on the form?
Looking on the seven through 12 text selection form.
It's number eight?
That's correct. So your thoughts on a separate question that would be more specific to age appropriateness?
Okay, let's, let's have, I know Dr. Benikowski, Luanne Hermrich, who's here, that, and our staff have gone through this process and used this form over time, so let's talk a little bit about how they have this, and any opportunities for any changes here.
Certainly. We have used this process in the past, we have refreshed it and made it a more rigorous opportunity, and if, your question, I'm here, but I want to make sure we're understanding the question, number eight, is that, that is a pretty comprehensive question, and opportunity to look at both the age appropriateness of the text for emotional ability, ability level, and it's putting a lot of information into one question. Am I, I'm assuming that you're looking at possibly separating them out into more separated questions?
Separating the age appropriateness component of that question out to a separate question.
Yeah, we have used this successfully in the past, but that does not mean that we can't do some modification of the form. Ms. Hermrich, do you want to add anything? We also have Mrs. Kay Haas, who is here, she is our K-12 Language Arts Coordinator, who's operating this process as well.
I think one of the, the other points of this is, that we have, that's kind of a safeguard in our process, relates to the fact that we require 100% consensus for, so as an example, if, let's say, for instance, a seventh grade selection might be considered, we would require two, at least two, seventh grade English teachers from all eight buildings to read the same book to complete this form. We would require unanimous agreement by all of those teachers, reading the text, considering that book as appropriate for seventh grade age students. If anyone found an objection to the age appropriateness, and then continued to say that they did not feel the book met that criteria for age appropriateness of the book, that would require that book to be reconsidered. So there is a, there is really a safeguard in the process, where many people, or many of our teachers, many veteran teachers, as a matter of fact, having worked with kids of the age for many years, are trying to reach some kind of a unanimous agreement on that. But we can certainly take that point as an advisement.
Yeah, just your thoughts. It's helpful to hear the process and the rigor behind it, that's very enlightening. Thank you.
One comment I just might add, there is a lot of thorough front work done on our selection process. We're very thoughtful about that, very careful, and we approach it from, we have a limited amount of time with our students, and we want to make sure that the materials we select are achieving the instructional goals that we have for that grade level. Sometimes there's opportunities to read other things in other ways, but when something's required in the classroom. So I think we've had good experience over that in this district historically. That doesn't mean that sometimes there's not disagreements about a particular text, but by and large, we've had a good process in place that, that does this front-end work before we ever get to the point of putting it in the classroom.
Other questions or comments related to the written information? I do have one, and that would be attendance at the parent teacher conference report, attendance at junior high and senior high conferences. If we would reflect back on our target goal, I don't know that I remember what that target goal was, I know that in looking at all the ways that parents can communicate or access information, such as Parent Connect, our website, and I know there are many that I'm not mentioning, that may impact some of our, some of the attendance at the junior high and senior high, but just if someone could please respond about the conference report as such?
I can have Dr. Benikowski come forward to, to talk to some specifics. I can tell you that our hope is that we have multiple ways for parents to communicate and get information, and I think now that we're fully implemented with Parent Connect at all of our schools, that parents do have that opportunity on a daily basis, 24/7, really, to get information about their student. On the other hand, we still want to make that fall conference a priority, because that's a relationship piece. It's a face-to-face at the secondary level of knowing teachers, putting a face and a name together, and, and then using those other tools. So I think it still needs to be a goal. We may need to do more work in getting parents to understand that. It does taper a little differently as students get older, parents have a longer track record with their student in school, maybe have other opportunities to meet teachers through activities and other kinds of things, but the relationship piece isn't built on, on the Parent Connect, it's just that we've expanded tools, and we may need to come back and refocus why we would want that relationship piece, you know, early in the year. And Dr. Benikowski, you may have some other observations?
I don't think I would add much to that, the fact that parent teacher conferences are an important vehicle, they are one vehicle. In 1997, when we decided to even add parent teacher conferences at the secondary level, we thought that it was very important to begin that process, and making sure parents are so important to the learning process. But we also have, as Dr. All said, expanded those tools from Parent Connect back to school night, many activities that we're having at our schools to involve parents. So while you see a variety of levels at the secondary, we certainly have many opportunities. This is only one tool that we absolutely measure so thoroughly. We could bring other data back to you about the options that parents have with Parent Connect email, and on 24/7, and email being just a one way of getting that quick response, where is my student doing here? And our teacher websites, which you can go on, and you have the lesson of the day, and you have the handouts, and you have the homework. So it's just more, actually, I sometimes feel as if I had been a student when we had all these, it would, there's nowhere to hide. Your parent is connected, if you will, with what is happening in school in so many different ways. But I think we firmly believe still that this is an avenue that we want to continue to enhance and invite, and make sure that we're connecting with parents. So I think we will continue to look at ways and avenues, and how parents feel about parent teacher conferences, is it meeting needs of the parents who are choosing to participate in that, and continuing to invite, so important.
Thank you, Dr. Benikowski. Any other questions or comments, board members, on written, the written items? If there are no other questions or comments, we are ready to entertain moving into our executive session. Dr. All, how much time do you think we need?
I'm thinking we'll need 45 minutes.
We'll look for a motion to return at 9:10, is that correct? I'm not...
Okay, that'd be... That would be 35.
About 9:20, I'm sorry.
If you want to do, if you want to try 9:10, I, we can, I'm sorry, what?
9:30, just to be safe.
Or 9:20? 9:20 is 45 minutes.
If someone would like to make that motion, please?
Madam President, I would move that we recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the private, privacy interests of individuals to be discussed, and to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, to return to regular session at 9:20.
A second.
Thank you. Dr. Drummond has made the motion, and has been selected by Mr. Churchman. Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Motion carries, we'll adjourn to executive session.